Oh my goodness, that could have been us.
So glad. I got some weak trees back there. They need to come out, but it's two, two of them. Fifteen grand.
What? Fifteen grand?
There were all the time I bought the house, been there 25 years, they're falling apart all over the place. I pick up more sticks than I do whatever I can grab.
Oh, how terrible. Get a little breeze and there's a... They look so pretty, but...
I know. I like it. Boy, if we get rid of them, we've got nothing. We're going to make stupid.
What are we doing now?
We were ahead of the curve. We didn't have ash trees, you know. I was like, nope.
Steve must have the plan.
Rock is proud of their...
Yeah, I know.
Hey, Steve.
Here we go. Here we go.
The time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of 28th June 2022 is called order. I'd ask those in our chamber audience here this evening, if you have not signed in, if you please sign in on the clipboard by the back door before you leave. And everybody here in the city council, please put their cell phones on vibrate. Roll call of members. Daniel?
House Member Steve Strand.
Here.
House Member Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Council Member Kurt Barcraft.
Here.
Kate Lanzberger.
Council Member Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Rick Fries.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in our council chambers, those that are joining us by Zoom. Also remember our city council meetings are on YouTube channel and also on Channel 14 on Wednesday evening. Just a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 29th is 10 to 11 AM is conversations with the mayor at Historic City Hall. And then Monday, June, July 4th is the Fourth of July Celebration Parade in Earhart, Minnesota, with parade starting at 11 AM. And our next city council meeting is slated for Tuesday, July 12th, here in the council chambers at 4:30 PM. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we please, all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comment. Is there anyone here in the chamber, council chambers that would like to address citizens' comments for an item that is not on the agenda? That is not on the agenda. Anyone? Saying none, move on to item number three is additions and deletions to the agenda. I have one deletion. That's item number seven, Senator Bill Ingerretson. Delete item number seven, State Senator Bill Ingerretson. Any other additions or deletions?
I move to approve with the deletion.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda. I'll read those. Item number four A is approval of council minutes of June 14th, 2022. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. Item four C one is utilities, utilities report, which is in your packet. Item number four C two is liquor store report, which is in the packet. Item four D is update IRS mileage, July 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, to 62 and a half cents per mile. Also, item number four E is Pelican River Pheasants Forever Gambling Permit Application, VFW at the VFW on August 21st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number five, this evening we have Carter Grupp and Amy Baldwin from Ottertail County here to speak on broadband. I think there's a PowerPoint presentation and also the council does have a copy of that. That's your case. Carter, take it away.
Absolutely. Hello. For those who don't know me, my name is Carter Grupp. I've been here working in conjunction with Ottertail County for about a year as a part of the American Connection Project on broadband infrastructure. Now, you might ask, what is broadband infrastructure? There are really two components of broadband infrastructure that I consider valuable. You have a social component, you have a physical component. A social component might be teaching elders and businesses to modernize and work with e-commerce and make sure that their websites and that their network connection is sufficient enough to support their operations. And then obviously, there's a responsibility to our youth as well. As it relates to the physical component of infrastructure, this particularly relates to the overhaul of DSL, coax and fixed wireless mediums in exchange for a fiber optic material. Forgive me if I look over towards the presentation, I'm going to be referencing figures on this presentation because I thought that, given all of the attention that broadband has had in the county with so many unique opportunities for public, private and philanthropic partnerships, that I would at least share an update where we're at and where we're intending to head. So if you please move to the first slide here. So this is Minnesota state data. Minnesota state has what's known as the Minnesota State Office of Broadband, which is really the main state authority when it comes to implementing policy considerations at the state level. And they articulated goals that were back in 2014, fortified that we would by 2026 reach 100% of Minnesota would have availability of 100 over 20 megabit per connection, per second connection. And that by 2022, 100% of Minnesota would also have access to a 2022, or to a 25 over 3 megabit connection. As you can see, this graph here on the left, if you look, that blue line is Ottertail County. This blue line has us, and this data is comparative to rural Minnesota averages. So these are other rural counties that are similar in population and a number of other demographics. But as you can see, we are trailing as it relates to 100 over 20 connection. And this is more likely a more stronger DSL line or fiber optic connection able to support those speeds. But you can see that we're making considerable progress. However, it's slowing at the margin and we have new data that will come in 2022. This goal graph here on the right shows a 25 over 3 megabit per second connection. And as you can see, we're relatively competitive as it relates to a 25 over 3 megabit connection. However, we do still have some work to do to meet the state's goal by the end of 2022. If we could go to the next slide. All right. So this graph here on the left is from the Blandon Foundation. The Blandon Foundation is a philanthropic organization. They've made it a large priority to understand broadband as an issue, especially rural broadband because it is so difficult to invest in rural broadband. And as you can see here, these numbers on the bottom, this is as it relates to 100 over 20 megabit per second connection, which is usually pretty good. Ottertail County in 2018 was ranked the worst county in Minnesota by the Blandon Foundation. Now, as you can see, more recently, we have obviously made commitments through the Minnesota State Border to Border Grant Program to improve this connection. And if you look here on the right, the yellow bar is state county averages. And those include Hennepin County, Dakota County, Scott County, Ramsey County, more urban counties. And as you can see, there's still a significant difference between rural versus metro as it relates to internet availability. If we could please move to the next slide. So in 2017, Ottertail County did a thinly engineering study. This was a market study to understand where investments could be made and what consumers on the backend were feeling. So some important things to note from this study is that there was about 5,000 households that were surveyed, 360 that were rural, and there was an emphasis on battleway as a component of the study. But you'll find here about 70% of the homes were on landlines. This is much higher than the nationwide average. We also found that 65 had a wired connection, which was a lot lower than the national average or the state average. 16% of rural Ottertail County, according to the data in this study, was satisfied with their internet speeds that they were getting at home. And that's concerning. 84% said that they would consider buying internet access from a new provider if it was faster than what was available. And 52% had DSL from CenturyLink, 62% didn't know the speeds they paid for, and 87% didn't know the speeds that they were getting.
65% wired connection.
Yeah.
What do you, what's that?
That would be a coax line, a DSL line, it could be a fiber line. It would be a direct line into the house.
Yep.
So if we could go to the next slide, please. This is the Minnesota State Border to Border Grant Program. It's responsible for a lot of the progress that was indicated earlier within the county and even in projects close to Pelican Rapids, that being cornered grant. This is a project that the Minnesota state puts forth where people, they like to partner local matches with state matches, as well as a provider contribution and other business and private entities in order to maximize investment and make sure that we make long lasting investments into things. So as you can see, we have had a significant amount of projects within Ottertail County. And you'll note that in 2017, there was a project just northwest of Pelican Rapids that was part of this state grant fund. And this was, and we'll get into it later, the rural area of Pelican Rapids ironically has better internet service than the downtown area in many instances because of some of these projects and state grant programs that have happened and federal grant programs that have happened in the past. But the important thing to note is that in 2022, there was $95 million made available by the state legislature. This was the most amount of funding ever made available for this issue. And we have two large projects pending and we anticipate next year, confirmation that there'll be $25 million available by the state in the form of competitive grants for the Border to Border Grant Program. If we could go to the next slide. Excellent. So this is the map that I was indicating. Some important things to note here is your green layers, your purple layers and your red layers. Your green layers are going to be a connection sufficient to support speeds over 100, over 20. Your purple area is going to be that 25 to 100. That's usually coax. It could be strong fixed wireless or even some DSL line. And then obviously, your red is the underserved category. But here's some statistics on Pelican Rapids. The incumbent provider is obviously ARVI, and they were the main applicant for that cornered grant project north of town. The important thing to delineate amongst this data right here is that Pelican Rapids would score higher on a future border to border grant program due to the fact that this data, which is reported by D and Minnesota State Office of Broadband, indicates that it's underserved. At the margin, it's going to score higher than an area that is red when it comes to competitive grants, but it is still an eligible project area for Minnesota State Border to Border investment in the future. It is not ACAM eligible. The other federal program that I was talking about was the American Connection Alternative Cost Model, which is really this is gray overlay. And those areas are eligible for ACAM, which is why a lot of this was built. And ACAM was passed in 2016. If you're familiar coming up here, the Earhart Exchange, if you see the Park Region guys out there right now, they were working on ACAM, and that is ongoing and it goes well into the future. The average download speed for the downtown area of Pelican Rapids based on speed test data is 43 megabits per second down and about 10 megabits per second up. And according to other provisions within the grant application process, indicates that Pelican Rapids would score higher on a competitive grant due to the fact that it has some ability to be an economically distressed area, meaning that it has unemployment rates that are higher than the Minnesota state standard and it has higher poverty and a lower median household income rate, which would also make it score higher in comparison to other applicants in the state. If we could move on to the next slide, please. And this is the greater Ottertail County map. I know that you guys represent the city of Pelican and its constituents, but we wanted to share the progress and make you known of what it looks like in the grand scheme of things because ultimately, we work towards the same goal. 92% of Ottertail County has wireline availability at 253. As I mentioned earlier, that state goal expires at the end of this year and it's set at 100%. So we're unsure if we'll meet that target. That data is still up in the air. 100 over 20 wireline availability, we've got 69.42%. And a lot of that progress is responsible for that border to border grant program that the state puts out every year that I mentioned. And this is relatively new. 25% of the county at 1 gig symmetrical. That is phenomenal. Those are your large schools, your large businesses, your organizations that need to have the capacity to support many employees. This year, we have two pending projects. Total about $11.2 million of investment for the North Burgess Project, which is really this area, and the East Ottertail Project, which will fill in some of these red areas over there. These projects will see about over 1,300 drops, 2,400 households, 160 square miles, 323 total miles. And we've gathered 443 speed test responses. So with that, that's my spiel. I'd be happy to invite the council to ask any questions at this time.
Any questions from the council?
When you talk about moving forward, this project and that project, are you talking fiber?
The Minnesota State Border to Border Program, if you're working within the bounds of that, of that program, that is strictly fiber to the home. The state won't fund any outdated forms of infrastructure, that being fixed wireless, DSL or coax. It is explicitly focused on fiber to the home.
So would they replace it with fiber or?
Yes. So they would overhaul existing coax lines and maintain that you have a fiber connection from the CO to the end user at their home, rather than you have a mixture perhaps in between.
CO?
That's the central office of the telecommunications provider.
Carter, as you move, as Ottertail County moves forward with this grant process, are you looking for a letter of support from the city of Pelican Rapids?
Again, I mentioned, that's a great question, Brent. A lot of this is so interconnected when you're dealing with plowing things under the ground and you can't get to some areas without getting to other areas. I think anything that would support these applications would help because you might have people in the city of Pelican Rapids that are working remote. You might have people living in these areas that work remotely at a business in Pelican Rapids where the city's support would certainly, while you're not going to get anything out of these projects in the interim, you might have constituents who will certainly be impacted by the effect. So I would, I would say that that would be a great thing and we could connect on that if that's worthwhile.
Do some of the lakes have priority over Pelican?
Could you rephrase or?
Do some of the lakes have priority because they have money? I mean...
So oftentimes, sometimes, and that's really a conversation for the provider. But oftentimes, individuals can ask the provider to plow it to them or bring it to them. And that's typically really expensive, which is why these programs are set up because it's so difficult to invest in rural broadband when someone's paying 50, 60 bucks a month and it's $8,000 to bore it to them and order all the materials paid to workers. It gets to be costly in rural Minnesota.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is all the council on board to write a letter of support, Ottertail County for this project? Someone like to make that a motion?
I move to write a letter of support.
Second. Sure. Discussion, discussion, discussion.
How long before Pelican Rapids is done?
That's in the future, and that's why I had highlighted that it could be considered, not this grant round, but in a future grant round, that it would be possible to collaborate and involve other partners on a potential project to bring fiber to the home to the downtown Pelican Rapids area. So that wouldn't be a part of this pending grant round, but there's more money coming down from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, as well as there might be funds that roll over from the first border to border grant round that would make it a worthwhile conversation 23, 24.
Okay. Carter, if this motion passes, you'll work with Administrator Solga on the language. This letter should include?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Move on to item number six is kitchen feasibility study. And we have Judy Tabit with us this evening to talk about the commercial kitchen feasibility study.
I thought I could be just a visitor, but Brent thought I should be on the agenda. So Judy Tabit, Local Foods, Local Places. We are working on a kitchen feasibility study. It should be kind of complete by, we hope, the weekend. Okay? I'm not sure how soon we'll get some results. Okay? And so with that, I'm going to ask that you not sell the senior citizens' building until we kind of get that finalized. I guess that's all I have.
Any questions for Judy? Any questions for Judy? Hearing none, thank you for your time, Judy. Item number eight is 1201 County Highway 9 discussion. That is the former bowling alley north of the Y in Pelican Rapids. And Don, do you want to lead the?
Yeah, this is, this is on the agenda to just kind of have a little bit more discussion on the last council meeting, we talked about it because we learned from the county that the old bowling alley building up on nine had went back on taxes. And so with this, all this discussion about a community kitchen and meeting room and that type of thing, this just became a potential obvious location to consider while they were looking at doing this feasibility study for a commercial kitchen. And so I reached out to Wayne Stein and to confirm that the building was available. And at the time, he said that it was. And so we made arrangements to, to get access to the building. And then I sent an email last week inviting all the elected officials to get ahold of me as far as picking a time that I could meet with them out there. And Local Foods, Local Places also wanted to kind of tour the building too. And so we took a couple of days and walked through it just to look and see the potential there. And so we wanted to, after, after being able to see the inside of the building, wanted to just bring it back before the council and have a conversation still, just kind of continuing on to see if this is a possible location. We have learned, yesterday morning, I was actually contacted by the county auditor and he just informed me that, that he had been contacted by, I believe it was Mr. Omar or some of the individuals from the Somali Society of Fargo. And so I guess there's some discussion as to whether that building is at the, at the state that it's at as far as going back on taxes, that type of thing. So after talking to Commissioner Stein, I just, because it's still up in the air from the latest that I had heard yesterday morning. And so I still wanted to be able to, to have elected officials and others just look at the building because until we know that it's not a possibility, it's a possibility. So with that, if the council has any questions or whatever, or any comments or thoughts going forward with the building, that's why it's on the agenda. And at the end of the day, what I'd kind of, you know, kind of like to see from the council or hear from the council on is, is whether we want to keep the option open until we hear differently from the county or whether we want to... And I know this building was also pointed out to the consulting firm that's doing the feasibility studies. So, you know, they're, they're taking a look at that as a potential option. So with that, I'll just kind of open it up for any comments or questions.
Don, did the county auditor have a timeline?
No.
Would it be any definite decision?
No. I know we have... Yeah, Mr. Omar, if you, yeah, if you would like to address the council, state your name and...
I'm Nidal Omar. I'm the president of the Islamic Society of Fargo Morheth. And I want to thank Mayor Brent and the council for having us over here today. Just want to, you know, like it seemed like yesterday when I was here for the first meeting, the only difference was I had a dark hair at that time. But it seems like it's on the star right now, you know? Anyway, what we just learned just about a week or a few days ago, what's going on with this building, it was an hardest mistake, which we are working right now at this point with the county auditor about it. We applied for a tax exemption for being, you know, like a religious place. You guys have a great, I mean, in fact, one of the places I always brag about in front of everybody, how wonderful Pelican Rapids is, how wonderful the mayor, how wonderful workers and people in the town here. I always brag about it because I honest, when I came here a few years ago, I felt home just being among you guys. And this is the town where actually I was so excited about even bringing more businesses to the town here and stuff like that. We do have, you know, like a big amount of refugees and the people who's working in this community. And that's when they reach out for us to get a place for their worship and stuff like that. So we've been working so hard to make this place available. With this COVID happened, put us off quite a bit. In the past, just a few months, we spent over 40 some thousand dollars in the building. We did not even know a single idea or a single thing about any of the stuff been happening before. We had actually, the permit came through the city for the heating and air conditioning and stuff like that, you know? And now was given to us. We had a new carpet was brought from Turkey to be put in that building and stuff like that. So we've been working so hard to make things happen for the community and for the people within the community here and stuff, you know? Omar, I'm asking for your support over here till we are, I mean, we working, like I said, with the county auditor and stuff like that and things looking good. And I'm hoping, I mean, we have all the money to pay right away and stuff like that, you know? And we just waiting, you know, like they said, to give a few days because they researching a few things and stuff like that, you know? And I'm hoping I get your full support in the whole thing. I worked with Doug before. Doug very great, great person to work with in the building. I worked with Mayor Brent and stuff, you know? Like I said, I could never thank you guys enough for all the help and support we've been giving through you guys. And I hope we continue the same thing. And I hope, you know, like things will work out to the best.
Thank you. Council, have any questions?
I would like to add as well, as a representative of the Muslim community.
Could you state your name, sir?
Jidigel. I am a part of the Muslim Civil Rights Organization, CARE Minnesota, Council of American Islamic Relations. And today, as our president here said today was, to add on to that is that a matter of the notice and eviction, we didn't, we didn't know anything about that. I mean, for, for, we've come to the city council time and time again to apply for permits, to apply for IUPs, CUPs in order to do the work that we've been doing to the robust bowling alley and transform it to what it is now. And in terms of the money and the time that was spent to it and now to be repossessed over a notice that we had no idea about. First of all, we did apply as, as he said, for the exemption. And a matter of whether it was approved or, or not, there's no notice. And the second aspect for the state commissioner to come over and to tell the city council about kind of, you know, where we are without us kind of have been in a loophole and kind of giving tour guides and putting up the building for sale is just, you know, at its statement, it's plain robbery, it's plain, you know, plain robbery in that aspect because we've put so much money to... we've put so much money to change it around and move it around. So today, what we're asking for is for the respective board members and the mayor as well to not be complacent in this injustice and to also kind of support us in our cause against the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Is there any kind of a timeline when you expect to get this resolved with the county and the state?
I will resolve it, you know, I was in contact with Mayor Brent yesterday. I was ready to even be in Fergus Falls today and with the check and everything ready for them, but they asked, you know, like for couple, three days before, you know, like they able to find out, you know, what they could do and stuff like that. But like I said, I want to resolve it yesterday. I mean, honest, just to get this taken care of and stuff. Because our plan was in July to have an open house and to have everybody, you know, within the community, within the Pelican area, to come over and visit over there and stuff like that, you know? So I'm hoping we could resolve it ASAP.
And to the respective members, this is a representation of the Muslim community. It's been growing here in Pelican Rapids. The other thing is for us to kind of hold anything against the state commissioner in terms of how we pay our taxes, things like that, they've swept us under the rug in terms of, you know, prior notice. It's not that we are not willing to pay the tax notice, it's a matter of we had no idea. And now that we're willing to take the steps forward, we have no type of support especially. So in the aspect today, we're asking for your support to pay it off as well. Not in the aspect of money, but just to help us, you know, communicate with them as well and let them know that you're with us.
Thank you.
Well, I was just curious, when you were down and visiting Mr. Stein in Ottertail County, the reason he wanted to wait before accepting a check for back taxes, was that to investigate?
He already been doing that investigation and stuff like that, but he was talking about some kind of application to submit to them and stuff like that, to kind of switch, turn around, you know, like the decision and stuff like this. And that's what we were waiting for. So he was supposed to give us an application to submit to them and stuff. In fact, right before I came over here, I called the office there, and they called me when I was here because I wanted to know exact amount of money, whatever it was they were talking about, and I was going to have a check ready right here, and I was going to leave it with you guys or drop it off over there just to have them have it ready in your hands and stuff, you know? So like I said, we are just ready to resolve the whole issue ASAP. And hopefully, we'll have the open house and have everybody invited over.
I think that's our main issue.
Well, you said no support. I didn't hear everything you said.
Support in the aspect of, I mean, we found out about this through article, you know, in terms of the people that were doing the work into the building and everything, you know, of those sorts. And so I don't mean support as in, you know, the respected community has not been supporting us in making this happen, I mean, support moving forward to resolve the matter and come to a common ground.
We just found out about this, I mean, because the taxes haven't been paid for years. So that's...
So the question in that aspect is, for us, we won't get a notice in terms of the city council and the city, when, you know, a building doesn't pay its property taxes, that is a part of local taxes. So I mean, in one way or another, you guys should have been able to get information before us as well, if that makes sense.
Steve, I'm sorry. You know, like my understanding, when we first got the building and stuff like that, we filed an application for a tax exemption. It's basically an honest mistake what happened right now and stuff like that. So it's not like we were trying to avoid anything, or what was happening, just an honest mistake, and that's what we trying to correct this thing. The support we've been having through you guys been absolutely great. Like I said, I could never say enough about the first meeting when I came with you guys, and I spoke about it and the excitement I saw from you guys, and I really appreciate that. And I know you guys have been so supportive, and you guys have been absolutely great, and I hope we can give you the same support for our community and our people here and stuff, you know? But so no, support been great from you guys and everything.
I have one request. There's a big blue garbage barrel, it's been tipped over forever, and there's junk out of it.
I'll have that cleaned.
It's really bad.
In fact, right after we leave the meeting, I'll make sure we will get that taken care of.
Well, it's big and heavy, but it's okay.
But like I said, I, you know, like I said, this COVID thing just plus behind, and few issues, you know, like I had, my father just passed away about a year ago, and like I was talking to Mayor Brent and stuff, you know? So I was fully taken care of him for the past three years. So that's kind of put us behind. Plus, you know, like every penny we put in there, it was supported by the community themselves. So there was no fund from any piece or grants or any of this stuff. So that's, and every time, trust me, we've been working on the building, we find out there's more and more and more stuff. And we've been trying to do everything just in the right way and stuff, you know? So it's not, we were not cutting any corners.
Thank you. I know we have colored Commissioner Johnson with us this evening. Give him the opportunity to talk to this if he wants to or not.
No, I was just trying to listen instead. What was reported to us at county board today was that we are beyond the legal timeline for repurchase. So in other words, when something goes for tax forfeiture, the statute, the state statute says somebody has so long of an opportunity to repurchase before it goes back for taxes. Okay? In this instance, this went back to the state, which then assigns it to the county, which then the county gives the city the opportunity to look at. Okay? That's, but there is a state statute that says you have X number of months, and I believe it's six, to repurchase this once it's gone forfeit. And the problem is, is we're beyond that state statutory limit. So Mr. Stein, the auditor, that's what he's checking on. He's checking on, is there any way, you know, feasible to somehow get relief from the state statute? So the reason I would not suggest taking a check right now, we don't know if anything can legally be done. And that was just a report given to us by the county auditor. So that's, that's what, that's what I know as of noon today. So we're up against a statutory thing, not anything else.
So at this point, it's wait and see?
But that's, he's researching, the auditor, and which was shared, he's researching what exactly can and what exactly can't legally be done. And so that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of, kind of, since all the involved parties are here, set the record straight a little bit. We often at the city level, when there's buildings in town that are setting empty or there's not a lot of activity going on over a long period of time in there, and we don't know because you're on the north end of town, how much you've been there and how much not. Anyway, it wasn't the county that contacted us regarding that building. Knowing that there was going to be a feasibility study done for a community area and a commercial kitchen, a community kitchen, we looked, the city, I looked, to see what buildings might be available because they went back on taxes. I found that the county website showed that that building went back to the state. So I reached out to Commissioner, or to Mr. Stein, and I asked him about it. And he, his comment to me was, I wasn't aware that that building had gone back, because he doesn't keep track of all the buildings, so, you know, that, that, so it was just, he probably would have came across it at some point, but I was the one that kind of directed him to look at that one. And he said, well, based on what I see, yeah, it went back on taxes. So I asked him if the city had a public purpose for it, if we could obtain the building, if in fact it is gone back on taxes. I don't think anybody, I can't speak for the council, but I don't think anybody basically, if it can get resolved and you guys can get the building back, I think that's priority one for all of us. Priority two would be, if you don't, the city has an option to possibly get it for a public purpose. But I just wanted to set the record straight that the county didn't reach out to us. I reached out to them because we were looking at different possibilities for that community kitchen, community center. And then the second thing is, there's no way we're taking a check from anybody that should be sent to the county. We're not going to be responsible to take the town.
But what I'm saying, I mean...
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Could have been for dinner.
Careful, we got the press here.
I still have my picture since he took it last time with the dark hair.
I just wanted to be clear that I reached out to them. They didn't reach out to us.
Like I said, we didn't even have any knowledge of the city.
So as soon as you find out, do you want to let Administrator Solga know?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm confident too that based on the fact that Wayne, Commissioner, or Auditor Stein knows that the city was interested in a potential public use for it, that as soon as he finds out, you know, what the status of the building will be, he'll be getting ahold of me anyway.
It's an unfortunate circumstance, the way it sounds. And hopefully, hopefully it gets resolved.
I'm hoping. And like I said, I got a full faith it will be resolved, it will be resolved soon.
It's just, you know, for it to be an unfortunate circumstance, it would make sense if you were ignoring our notices, I mean, like that.
Right.
You know, blindsided by such a thing, then, you know, it doesn't put blame on the community and society, Islamic society. You know, we don't know who to put blame to because at the end of the day, it's coming from the state. So I mean, today's city council meeting was about to see, you know, how willing you guys are to support it. And I was consistent, that's it, you know, you guys are 100% behind us. I think it just kind of goes to show how much work, you know, we put into the building.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
I would appreciate it.
This is new information to me tonight. You know, I'm happy to hear it. I hope you do best for you.
We read about through an article that, you know, I mean, then at that point, it kind of puts, you know, the community against the city. And it says, you know, especially when you have the city wants to repossess or buy the building, I mean, just kind of post, you know, who are we battling here, whether it's the state. But it's, it's nice to know that today, you know, we have the support of everyone. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you. Danielle? So Mayor, the only other point of this matter, if Wayne Stein, and maybe this is going to be, it'll be a topic, kind of an update at the next council meeting, but if it turns out that the building is potentially available for the city, are we still looking at, you know, you've all been in it now, other than Kurt hasn't had an opportunity, but after seeing it, the potential there potentially, I mean, is it something, if we have an opportunity, you still want to pursue or?
What would be the timeline to pursue?
I don't know that without, I mean, typically, say there wasn't this issue before that property, and the council said, yeah, we'd like to pursue doing that, then it's just a matter of potentially looking at doing a resolution by the city council wanting to do that, stating the public purpose, sending it to the county. The county puts together a resolution stating the public purpose and passes it at the county commissioners meeting, and then it gets sent down to the state, and the state starts working up the transfer deeds. But, so, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it has to take too long for it to happen. And I understand that we're not going to want to go down that road until this gets resolved, obviously.
Right, no. I think, I think it's important to wait.
So, so, and that's kind of, all I need to know is, no, let's just wait until that gets resolved, or, so if Wayne Stein, I have a conversation with him, I'm telling him, we're just wait till, till that's resolved, then we'll let him know if we're interested, or?
Council comfortable with that?
I think so, yeah.
Let's see what they decide.
Okay. Thank you. Item number nine is approve election judges. Danielle?
Yes, I'd like to approve some election judges. The pay would be thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents an hour. It would be myself, Annalee, Paulette Nevested, Don Lystoker, Barb Ripley, Joyce Burnham, Kimberly Pierce, James Hoff, and Shanna Ballard.
Do I make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
We have a motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carry. Item number ten is council meeting date changes. Danielle?
Yep. So the primary is on August ninth, which would be the meeting, the first meeting of the month in August. My calendar's not going to come up. So that one needs to either be moved or canceled or whatever you guys want to do with that one.
What did we do last time this happened?
I think last time, we've always held them on the day after, as far as. So that one I need a decision on, and then the general election is November eighth, which is a council meeting date. I would like that one to be moved to the next week and have it on November fifteenth. And the reason being is because we'll have to canvas the vote, which is, it can only be done the eleventh, which is a holiday, so it can't even be done on that date, through the eighteenth. So it would work out, I should have the results hopefully by the fifteenth so we can canvas that.
So to create less complication, we, can we move both to the following week?
Yep, we can do that.
If the council agree?
What is that date for the?
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth of August and the fifteenth of?
November.
November, yep.
Any comments from the council?
We need a motion for that.
Yes. I move that we move the August ninth meeting to August sixteenth and the November eighth meeting to November fifteenth.
I'll second that.
All right, motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carry. Next item, number eleven, fire department personnel. Danielle?
Yes, the fire department hired a new fireman. It would like council approval to hire him. His name is Tristan Wall, and he would be paid what all the firemen are paid, eleven eighty-four an hour. He's passed the background check that's required. So I just need council approval.
I'll move we hire Tristan Wall to the fire department.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion?
What was the wage again? Eight, eleven eighty-four?
Eleven eighty-four.
Discussion? Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carry. Item number twelve, the city administrator position slash executive search proposed a consideration which was in your council packet. And I'll turn this over to Don.
Yeah, you guys had this in the packet. Hopefully, you got a chance to review it. It introduced the team that would be working on behalf of Pelican Rapids to search for the next city administrator. Kind of lays out a timeline, but that timeline would, is really, some of it was dependent on, you know, hitting council dates and stuff like that. So I think if the council does approve going forward with this, then I would contact them tomorrow, and I think a more definitive schedule and timeline of everything, you know, playing out would then be put together on their part. The cost to go through this, and it kind of, it kind of runs through all the steps, that's why I hope you did read through it to kind of get a feel for all the work and time that goes into what they do. But the cost to do all that was twenty-two thousand dollars. So Steve, you weren't too far off when you said...
No, boy.
But you can see, they kind of gave an example also of a position profile that they put together as they start sending this out. The one, the one thing that obviously I think would be the biggest benefit would be the reach that they do, you know, as they, as they go out and search, you know, if we did, it was just, it'd be more through local paper, League of Minnesota Cities, Facebook, you you know, some of those avenues, but they have a much broader networking system to go multi-state, maybe even country, the United States as a whole, but, and then, you know, they got some, some things in here too, that pertain to, you know, we'll say guarantees, but maybe warranties, like, they do follow up with the, the person that's selected for a couple of years, see how things are going, and if they do happen to leave within that period of time, then they'll go through and search for another one, at no charge type thing, or minimal cost, but.
I was impressed with that.
Yeah, and, you know, they, you know, we had put together, the council had put together kind of what they, I'll call an interviewing committee, but in talking with them, you know, they really work strictly or directly usually with councils. And they even had, you saw in here, the list of all the cities and counties that they had had already worked on behalf of, and that's not even all of them, because I know some of the cities that they've done work for aren't even listed, but, so, they said that they, they typically work with the council direct, which is good, because then you know exactly, as a council, where everything's at and what's going on.
Does this happen at a public council meeting? All the working together with the council?
I, I think in that time, yeah, if they're working with the council as a whole, it would be at a public meeting, and I think they might have even, in that timeline thing, they might have even laid out maybe a special meeting or two to, to talk about certain things, but, but again, I think that was more if it couldn't hit council meetings in general. But they, they weren't totally opposed to the idea of a committee, but they just, they just mentioned that, and they had worked with advisory committees in the past to some extent too, but they just felt that ultimately, it's the council's decision anyway, so, and, and because they normally work directly with the council, a committee might be handy to bounce, you know, potential candidates off, but may not be necessary, but I, we still have the committee intact, so if we can use them and want to use them, we can. But, so with that, like I said, if the council wants to go forward with this approach, then I just need a motion to do that, and I will get a hold of them tomorrow.
Councilman Strand, you said you worked with a firm when you were on the.
I don't remember the name of the firm, but it's not a bad idea. You know, when I, when I studied this, you know, they, there was like four cities near us. The downside is, they all live quite a ways away, you know, in the cities. And then the other downside is, I mean, there were other towns looking for people too.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody needs help.
Yep.
I think it's a smart move to use a firm.
Yeah. It'd be a ass undertaking for a city council to step forward.
Be like faster than us getting up to speed.
And the clock is ticking, how much vacation do you have?
I'm going to try and burn up all that, or most of that, before I go anywhere. I can't guarantee I'll get rid of all of it. So you're prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We hire a.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. You getting a hold of tomorrow, Don?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item number thirteen is wage study consideration, also, there's a couple handouts in your packet regarding that, Don?
Yeah, I, I got a proposal or a quote from Flaherty and Hood, who did our last wage study in 2016, and they sent me this, it was in your packet, it kind of, again, lays out what, what they would do and the cost to do it. One of the things that, you know, they did the last time, and, and because of, and what it cost last time, they went through, and they did a lot of work right from, from scratch to make sure that we had, you know, everything in place, surveying all the employees as to what their tasks are, their job descriptions and that type of thing, and rated everybody. They went through all that, and they don't have to do that this time, because it was done in 2016. So this time, it, it's going to be more just doing the, the marketing surveying that they need to do to, to, to let us, to give us some information on where our scale should be. And I think the reason this is kind of important is twofold. One, with, with inflation and wages going up everywhere, to know where we really should stand with the city employees. Maybe we're where we should be, but in, in the fact that with the inflation pressures and everything else, and wage pressures and everything else, I have a feeling that the wage study would come back with some interesting information for us. But also, the second part of it is, for the union contract that needs to basically be renegotiated again in 2023, we know where things stand from that standpoint, you know, for this next year, but in, in 2023, we'll actually be talking about the next contract in 2024. And I think having a wage study done this year, and I, the timeline of it, I asked Flaherty and Hood if they could give me an idea of what the timeline would be, and they didn't, they didn't, I hadn't heard back from them, but I think if, if this is something that we do and it gets done this year, and we know what the cost of living adjustment for the union contract is next year, I think that would be really valuable information for the city negotiating the next contract, because you can't, you can't argue the study. So the only, only thing would be, would be more the, the benefit side of things, but, so I think the timing of it is good, because I think it just sets us up good for the next union negotiation, and it kind of sets us up for what the, really the wages should be for the city as we try and attract employees that want to stick around. So you see that in the, in the proposal, it was thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, which they originally sent me a number that was higher than that, but I talked to them and they brought it down a little bit.
Good negotiation.
Yeah.
What's the council's wishes?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Under service, the seven fifty amounts.
Oh, yeah.
Does that apply to us?
No, so, so, the, the thirty-seven fifty covers basically doing all of the, you know, the salaries, looking at the, the scales and all that stuff, make, doing a final report, the implementation like they did last time, implementing the, the, any, any adjustments, how we, how we do that, especially implementing them if they're done prior to the end of a union contract, that type of thing, but also making sure that, that it passes the pay equity, whatever they come up with at the end too. So the seven fifty would apply if we decide we want them to do more beyond just wages. So if we want them to do a surveying of, of benefits, health insurance, HSA contributions, you know, vacation, sick leave accrual, all that type of benefit stuff, then there'd be an extra charge, because they wouldn't be looking at that, they'd only be looking at wages. And that's, that's what their fee is, to, to add anything to it, and I, I basically didn't think that that was necessary, because I think, even though every union negotiation round, we always get into benefits and how Pelicans aren't where they should be, but they're, but it just depends. I mean, when, when I look at where we're at, compared, you know, with the comparative cities that we, that we compare to, that the Coalition or Flaherty and Hood, you know, they give us our comparables, in, in most, every one of those benefit areas, we're competitive. I could see in one maybe area that, that we, we could probably look at, but that would be the next negotiation. The other thing about doing this wage study, and having Flaherty and Hood done it, do it, the next union negotiation, I really, really highly recommend that the city has this law firm do it, because they, they specialize in labor, and they do a lot of negotiations, contracts for communities. We've just always done them. In fact, when I started, Mr. Dirks and I did them, and I was just sitting in on them. And then when Dirks retired, I just continued on doing them myself, with, with the mayor sitting in on them. But I highly recommend you go back to having somebody that really is more skilled and, I mean, we've done okay, but somebody that's more skilled in dealing with those types of things, and that's right up their alley, so. One of the changes that were made to, to us was the fact that they moved from one union to another one, to a much larger one, and for that reason, I think we need to look at doing it a different way. But anyway, it starts with this, because if they do this, it sets them up to also be prepared to really talk to the union, should you guys have them do negotiations.
Don, are we studying job descriptions at all, or going back through any?
We're not going to go through the surveying and all that stuff, because the job descriptions that we have in place, you know, they, we, we did those prior to 2016, and they were, they were updated prior to that. They just reviewed them and looked at them, and based on what the surveys that they did with all the, all the positions in the city, they could, they could, after the, the employees did all their surveying, and then they looked at the job descriptions that we had in place, there was no reason to change them.
Okay.
So the job description should be okay.
I hear a motion to hire.
I move to hire.
Okay.
I second.
Motion second to hire, I don't know, for a wage study. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number fourteen is the park board minutes, and they're in your packet, there's no one here from the park board to speak to them. I hear a motion to approve the park board minutes.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number fifteen is administrator report. Don?
Yeah, since the last meeting, basically, aside from prepping for the meeting and, and put the packet or the, the agenda together, I, I worked with, I had Justin Fear, Fear? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he was here, he left.
I mean, after the last meeting, we found that the adjustments that, that him and I made to the sound system didn't work. In fact, the last meeting, we didn't have sound, so it wasn't on our big, but, so he came in and, and, and we did a few other things, and that's why you see the mics kind of setting the way they are. We used, we were able to use some of the old mics, I wish we had a different stand for there, but, you know, that's where we are. And so anyway, we did test it last night at the planning commission meeting, and it turned out pretty well, so. I also worked on the police department, now that Jeff is back, we had all the calls going, that were coming into our non-emergency phone line, we're going right to dispatch, and, so we've reconfigured those to that, so that the, the calls to the, to the desk back there actually go, you know, start going to the officers and not through dispatch, only nine-one-one will go to dispatch. And actually, we did, I did tweak it a little bit, so the number of calls, the number of rings before an answer, you get an answer from an officer or a voicemail, is dramatically lower now, which will be very, very helpful. And in talking to the officers, they seem to think it's working pretty well. Then also, I, as we've all talked about tonight, I've spent some time with, talking to the county auditor, and then also just spending some time showing individuals the facility of the bowling alley, or the mosque facility at the north end of town. I had a virtual meeting with USDA regarding a community's facilities grant, and that was something that was put together by the, the consultant that's doing the feasibility study for the commercial kitchen. And I also was involved in, Ottertail County is doing a complete streets workshop to come up with their own complete streets policy, similar to the states. And so they're having three or four workshops, and they invited certain individuals and communities that have been through the complete streets concept process to, to kind of be a part of that workshop, so I attended that. I also attended a conference call with Ottertail County Community Development Authority, Amy Baldwin, and our engineering, Apex Engineering Firm, talking about Ottertail County's planning grant, and we're looking at using that as Raymond starts, continues to go down the path of putting together a preliminary plat, which they're not at, we're not that, at that stage yet, but the, the, the planning, the planning of the northwest area, if you remember, the Apex is now working on kind of a cost estimate for phase one infrastructure, but at some point, we'll be looking at, potentially anyway, depending on them numbers, looking at doing a preliminary plat or starting that process, and there will be some assistance, because all those costs will be passed on to the developer, and there will be some planning grant assistance potentially for that effort. And then, the last thing is, I attended last night's planning commission meeting, so that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Don?
What was the result of the meeting with USDA?
Well, it was just more to, to give us information on a possible grant that could be applied for, and again, it's competitive everywhere, but a grant that could be applied for that would cover a good portion of a, a, a community kitchen, and it really, whether it's eligible or not, has to do partly with how the kitchen will be used, if it's, if it's something that's made available for individuals through the farmer's market or local foods, local places, if it's able to rent it out to, to people that want to prepare foods to sell at different venues, that type of thing, then it's an eligible project. If it's, that could be, that we could apply for funds to help pay for all of it, putting a kitchen in. If it's something that, you know, caterers are able to use when there's events at an event center or a community room, that type of thing, then no. So they want, they want, they're looking for fun kitchens that basically are going to be used by individuals, local producers to produce food that can be sold to stores or, or, you know, farmers markets and that type of thing, so. And then how much was available, you know, depending upon how much money the USDA is giving, that type of thing.
Councilman Strand?
Could you share how the chief is doing? Is he?
Chief is doing good. Chief wants, he should, he thinks he, he should be out there chasing down bad guys already.
On Sunday?
No, he, he feels really good. He has his checkups two or three times a week, and I think he's got another big test appointment coming up soon, and, and, you know, I know he's hoping that the doctor will say, you're good to go, and he can come back full capacity, but we're still waiting for that point, but he's ready to go, he feels ready to go.
That's great. And can you tell me how it does calling the police now differ from?
Before, yeah.
I don't get this.
Good question. Before, the way it was set up was when somebody called the desk phone back there, if the officers weren't in, it would ring four or five times, and then it would transfer to one of the, the cell phone they carry. And if they were tied up, after that phone rang three or four or five times, then it would transfer to another cell phone. And the chief would carry, had, well, I think he was carrying both of those. One of them is his off-duty phone, and the third, the third phone was another duty phone. And then if, if, if that one wasn't picked up, because that might be a phone that, another officer on shift, if we had two, might be carrying something like that, and if that one wasn't picked up, then it would go to the chief's off-duty phone, and then the chief would answer it, or it would go to a voicemail. So you'd potentially have, and granted, now, if they're calling the desk in here, it's not a nine-one-one emergency call, it's a non-emergency, but they would still go through fifteen to twenty rings. Well, by that time, you're thinking the phone's not working, or there's nobody working, or you just give up and say, forget it, I'll call another time. So now, the way we, we've got it set up, it's three rings. Um, so now, the way we, we've got it set up, it's three rings, maybe four, and because the, the phone back there and the cellphone ring at the same time. And then if, if there's no pickup there, it goes to a voicemail. And it's a, again, a non-emergency call, but this time, the voicemail basically stays on the phone that the officers have, it's not transferring to another one, but not only that, it also sends that voicemail via, uh, an audio to their email. So they're gonna be able to answer, you know, re, listen to it on the phone, if they can't answer it because they're busy, but they'll be able to listen to it on the phone, or if they happen to come into the office, um, they could also listen to it in the email that they have at their desk back there.
Thank you.
So much quicker.
Hey, any other questions for Don?
Yeah, thank you, Don. Item number sixteen, Mayor report, just a few items. I presented a welcome at the Friendship Festival on Saturday, June eighteenth, and also, uh, on June twenty-first and twenty-seventh, I toured the former bowling alley at twelve oh one County Highway nine once with Administrator Solgo, yesterday with, uh, steering committee for Local Foods, Local Places. I attended a Zoom meeting with Local Foods, Local Places regarding the feasibility study in the commercial kitchen here in Pelican Rapids. And then, uh, yesterday, uh, met with Administrator Solgo to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions of myself?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Uh, item number seventeen, the motion to adjourn, seeing, Council Mr. Strad?
Yeah.
The motion to adjourn, second? Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You are. I don't even have to hurry.
It's a that night?
Yeah.
You go through life, and there's so much.
A lot.
I said, it's ridiculous.
And then Friday night, everybody's already asleep. Good to meet you.
Yes.